The other residents or guests that would like to address the village board on matters on the agenda. Observing no one, we thank you for being with us tonight, and the board turns to consideration of the omnibus vote. Board has consideration this evening, approval of omnibus vote items A through G and acceptance of H and I, and the chair would entertain a motion. Motion by trustee Kagan, second by trustee Beavers, to approve omnibus vote items A through G and acceptance of H through I, and we will have administrator Rush review those matters with us. But is there a request for separate consideration of any of those?
Mr. Mayor, I would request separate consideration of E.
Okay, so noted.
Mr. Mayor.
Pittinger?
Separate consideration for D.
Separate consideration of D and E. Any further requests? Hearing none, administrator Rush, please review the omnibus vote.
Certainly. Item A, ordinance number 201142, granting a minor amendment to the final plan and plat of the planned unit development for River Crossing condominiums, 3429 83rd Street. The River Crossing condominium association has applied for a minor amendment to a final plan and plat of planned unit development to allow the removal of the existing pool. The pool will be replaced with an outdoor gathering area, including a grassy lawn, picnic tables, grills, potted plants, and game area. Under the streamlined development review process, this request only requires staff approval. Staff granted the approval on August 8, 2011. Ordinance number 201143, amending the village code of the Village of Woodridge titles III and IX, massage establishment uses and massage establishment licenses. The applicant, Sarah Sani LLC, has submitted a request for a text amendment to the village code to allow massage establishments as permitted uses in the B2 community district, or shopping district, excuse me. Currently, the village code only allows massage establishments as accessory uses in the B2 and RBC zoning districts. The plan commission considered their request at a public hearing on August 1, and recommended approval of the text amendment with a vote of seven to zero, subject to the creation of a business license that would regulate this use. For your consideration this evening, the zoning change and the license provisions are the, are included in this ordinance. Ordinance number 201144, amending the village code of the Village of Woodridge Title V, Section 5, 7(c)(2a), drug paraphernalia defined. The meaning of this ordinance remains the same. The changes in the proposed ordinance reflect the corresponding Illinois compiled statute numbers in this ordinance. Items D and E, we'll explain later. Item F is Resolution R 642011, waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing the director of Public Works to accept a quotation from HD Supply Waterworks for the provision of water meters and related equipment. This is an annual purchase of water meters and related equipment for new construction or replacement of older or malfunctioning meters. The village has standardized on census brand meters, of which HD Supply Waterworks is currently the exclusive distributor of the census brand in Chicago and northern Illinois. Item G is a motion to authorize a liquor license fee waiver at St. Scholastica Parish for Castaldo Park at 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. on September 11, 2011. St. Scholastica Parish has requested the temporary liquor license fee waiver for their parish picnic this Sunday.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, item H and item I are minutes and accounts payable registers.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. I would inquire of the maker and second of the motion as to whether they would accept the friendly amendment to not consider D and E. Okay, then you have before you, and a motion's been made, to approve omnibus vote items A through G and acceptance of H and I, with the acceptance of approval of D and E. Final questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Clark Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittinger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Okay, we will now seek a motion to approve ordinance 201145, amending the village code of the Village of Woodridge Title IV, Public Health and Safety, Open Burning, and Other Ancillary Sections. Motion, excuse me, by trustee Kagan, second by trustee Banks, to approve ordinance 201145. Administrator Rush, please give us an overview of that matter.
Certainly. The proposed ordinance improves the clarity of what actually constitutes illegal actions regarding open burning. This matter comes up almost every fall about this time of year. This ordinance will allow officers and other village officials to issue a parking ticket to a violator rather than issuing them a long-form complaint. The proposed ordinance establishes a fine schedule of $50 for the first offense, $100 for the second offense, and $200 for the third and subsequent violations.
Okay, final questions or discussion? Trustee Pittinger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, with those, I have a few questions related to, because it's not just about burning. I noticed that there's other sections in here as well. Under, under the ordinance, it says section, section two, where it says storage creating fire hazard, unsanitary deposits, illegal collection of recyclable materials, so, as well as certain regulations regarding commercial scavenger service. Could I get, I think I know what unsanitary deposits are, but, other than the obvious, is there something else that falls in that category?
No. What's being done here is, as you probably are guessing, a number of these things don't relate to open burning.
Right.
Which is the main focus. But in, in putting open burning in the code and amending Title I to provide, it can be subject of a compromise and settlement, a P-ticket violation, and also providing the fine, I noted that other sections, for example, unsanitary deposits, which is later set forth in the code as to what constitutes that, were not included, yet the village wanted to compromise those also. So, a lot of these are just rectifying clerical errors to make sure it's properly referenced in the ability, with the ability to compromise and settle, provide a fine for it, and that's what that relates to. It's nothing new that hasn't been in existence and is later defined in the chapter under refuse.
Okay, so, so they're later defined in, in the ordinance, but at this point, there are items that weren't referenced in this particular section are being added in so that they can be, the law can apply for the ticketing.
Correct. They were already violations, but in order to enforce them, you'd have to have a long-form type ticket, a court proceeding. And in doing this, and in inserting these new provisions in a separate section on open burning, I noted those. So, none of these relate to open burning. They're making sure the procedure flows, so they're permitted to be the subject of a P-ticket, then providing for the appropriate fine for the P-ticket. And pretty much everything but section six is making these types of corrections in the code, as I saw them after a number of years of that provision being in effect. So, most of it is really just cleanup.
Okay. Let me, although I am a bit curious in nature, I am still curious about what constitutes an illegal collection of recycled materials?
Oh, I can, I can answer that one.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, I can answer that. In order for, there's generally a license issued for one scavenger within the village to pick up refuse. And because recyclable materials have some value these days, nobody can just come through town and start throwing recyclables in the back of their truck to go process, they also have to have a license from the village in order to do that, so they're the sole entity permitted to do that, other than for those commercial entities that receive separate scavenger recycling service from an outside vendor.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. So, it's the, so it's the, it's the collection of the recycle.
Yeah.
That's, that's the subject of the law, not the, not a person or resident doing their own collecting.
No, 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 no. No, 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 not at all.
Okay.
It relates, so, you don't have somebody trying to illegally take business away from our licensed scavenger or other entity that's licensed to do it.
Okay.
And that's later defined in the whole section on, on refuse.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members on the motion? Okay, hearing none then, Clark Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Pittinger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
And we have separate consideration of Resolution 632011, and the chair would entertain a motion to approve 20, Resolution 632011, authorizing the mayor and village clerk to execute an agreement for consultant services between the Village of Woodridge and James J. Bennison Associates. Is there such a motion? Motion by trustee Kagan, second by trustee Beavers. Okay, a motion has been made, and second, questions and discussion, trustee Abbott.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about what is entailed with this contract, and I don't know who, maybe Chris, I don't know, this should be directed to you. It's, from my reading of it, it sounds like the contractor will go out, drive out the roads of the village, sort of classify the roads as far as, you know, what condition they're in, from best to worst, and then decide, and then kind of put something together as far as which roads are worse, what type of remedial action is available, sample cost or estimated cost of various things. Is that, is that essentially what the contractor would be doing?
It is, and I'd be happy if I can go into a little bit of the history as far as how we arrived here, and past work we've done, as well as kind of with this selection process, but yeah, that's correct, that's generally what the...
I guess, you know, the first thing that strikes me as I read this is, you know, do we need to hire someone to go drive our roads to tell us where the potholes are? You know, and we have, we have very talented staff, and it seems like, I mean, the first question that popped up is, for my mind, was why can't we do this in-house?
Mr. Bethel, why don't you give us an overview, as you alluded to?
Sure. In 2002, 2003, the village did not yet have a comprehensive database of all of the street segments and accompanying data as far as square yardage of pavement, and by street segment, I mean from this crossroad to this crossroad, as well as the accompanying data as far as the amount of pavement, cost estimates related to the different treatments that would happen on that pavement over the next approximately 20 years. In 2003, the village had actually brought in one of the vendors who had submitted a proposal, Infrastructure Management Services, who had done a similar evaluation. IMS is commonly used by a lot of communities across the Chicagoland area. They, for our purposes in '03, it was very helpful in that they did an autom, their system is really automated. They have a truck that's outfitted with lasers and various data collection equipment, where they generate a very large report that gives you the condition rating of the, of the streets. But it's not necessarily user-friendly as far as doing data analysis. It wasn't what the village needed in '03, it was really setting up the information to work from. So, since '03 to present day, as you know, through the budget processes, we've made a number of revisions to the treatment cycles. We've pushed them out, we've implemented different treatments in order to try to maximize our dollars that we have available, and while still keeping the roads in the best possible shape. One of the issues we see, though, is that there are deficits in the MFT fund, which is what pays for the road improvement in the community, once you get out past the approximately five- to six-year time period. We've been continuing to stave that off by changing the treatment cycles, as well as we've had a lot of success over the last three to four years with grant funding, which has taken on, and helped to pay for some very large projects for us. What the intent was here was to try to come back and strategically look at this issue from really two vantage points. One is collecting that data to try to do a comparison to how we looked in 2003, and what kind of success that we've had to date with the, with the options, but the, the work that we've done, rather. But the second, I think the one that's more critical, is working, we use what's a relatively standard treatment cycle, where we'll come through, and after we resurface the road, we'll do some curving crack fill. Four to five years later, we're going to do random crack fill across the street. Another five to six years after that, we're going to do patching, and then we're going to come through and do resurfacing. Unfortunately, when you resurface, you're milling out the inch and a half to two inches of top asphalt on a typical project. The asphalt that's located underneath that, over time, dries out, becomes less pliable. And so, while you're resurfacing on the top, and that's going to be fresh asphalt, what's underneath of it, you're going to start to see those cracks that get reflected up quicker and quicker. What that's leading to you is eventually you need to reconstruct the, the streets. That is not something that we've contemplated as of yet in the database and program that we've set up. There are also lots of different treatment options out there that are constantly being revamped, or new treatment options that are being offered, and it can be micro-surfacing, it can be a slurry seal, all that are designed to lengthen the life of your road. And what we want to do is look at those different treatment options in order to devise what is hopefully a plan that, again, continues to maximize our dollars, and, and get some input from outside consultants on what they've seen elsewhere, as far as how those treatments have, have worked. The goal of what all this is leading up to is to try to come back to the mayor and board during the budget process, to present to you some options that, based on dollars we have right now, here's what we're going to be able to do as far as a treatment cycle, and this is what you can expect to see as far as the condition of the roads. If there's a certain level of condition you'd like to see in the roads, calculate out, here's what the annual revenue is we're going to need in order to hit that, to hit There's a specific evaluation methodology that the, the consultants are, are using. It's called the Pazer methodology out of Wisconsin, in order to rate the, the street segments. And again, it is something that I think our staff, we, we could do the work, I don't know if we would necessarily do it with the unbiased eye of a consultant who does street maintenance, is one of their main, main focuses. So, that's really kind of the intent and background with it.
Thank you.
If I could just kind of address quickly, I promise, related to the selection process, I think you could probably shed a little bit more light on that. In a proposal process, we're really laying out the outcomes we would like to get out of the project. We're not necessarily dictating the scope and how the consultant has to do it, and that's really to our benefit, is again, we're not necessarily the experts in this, but we know what we want. So, and our goal, and we had sent it out to eight firms, the three that ended up submitting were all very different as far as how they approached it and what they were going to provide to us. Going back to what administrator Rush had mentioned with the, the selection process, in the statute, and Mr. Good can jump in if I misspeak, it's called the qualified-based selection process, or QBS, that's set up in the statute. The QBS process, what's formally in the statutes, is actually, you're going to solicit for qualifications from engineering firms, and then you're going to interview those engineering firms. You don't get into any type of cost or pricing discussions with them. You pick the firm that you think is most qualified, and then you negotiate with that firm on a scope and cost, try to come to an amicable number. If you can't, you then would move to the second firm in your ranking. As a home rule community, we have abilities to tweak that process, which is why, when we go out for proposals, even when we're going through the modified QBS process, we still ask the vendors to submit pricing, because we think that's the best way to get competitive numbers upfront, where they're going to give us good costs. The optional services that were included in here, as Michael had mentioned earlier, GIS has been a big function and goal for the village. We thought it may be an opportunity, while the consultant is out gathering data for the roadway, that we could gather other data that could be integrated into the GIS system. Some of the costs were higher than what we had anticipated. We didn't think necessarily this was the time to recommend those types of expenditures. But again, even the interview process and talking to the firms about how they did this, Bob Myers, our, one of our engineering staff who's been helping to lead GIS, got a chance to ask some questions, to quiz them, so it was still a data gathering, where again, I think it puts us in a better position down the road. So, Bennis was the one that we thought had the best process that got us to the goal of what we wanted, is to provide some of those options to the, to the mayor and board for consideration.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Just, if I could just follow up.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor. So, Chris, then, it, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, I guess I'm still trying to figure out what the contractor would, would provide that we can't do in-house. I know you mentioned that they can give perhaps a more objective look at the issue, but other than that, what are they giving us that we can't do in-house? Is there anything, I guess, maybe it's the first question?
I think first, they have a more extensive depth of knowledge as it comes to pavement maintenance, pavement management, a better understanding of the options that are, are out there. A second component of it is, is really tied back to the amount of time available. We had, previously had, again, four staff in the engineering department. When we had used a consultant in '03, there were only two staff in the engineering department right now, so timing would be an issue. It, it's something where you do need to, you, ideally, you're going to want to conduct the evaluation before the leaves start to fall from the trees, before you have snow on the pavement. And I think, again, kind of the, the depth of knowledge, can our staff work with pavement management and maintenance? The consultant who does this all the time, and it goes down to one of the optional items, which was deflection testing. So, one of the things we wanted to see, that we might wanted to include with the scope, the deflection testing is basically a device that bangs down on the pavement and then reads the sound waves that come back, and it gives you a better indication of what's going on with the base underneath the pavement. Those costs were, again, much higher than we had anticipated, but again, we thought a consultant who has the background and skill, and they are going to be able to identify based on what's happening on the surface with the pavement, whether it's cracking or spalling, whatever it might be, is also going to be able to better identify some of what's happening under the pavement, and again, put us in a better position where we have good data going, going forward. One of the pieces we had added to their scope, although the cost came down, one of the pieces we added to the scope is we had actually asked the consultant, for the first five-year time period, to lay out the specific program they would recommend as far as the streets and costs. What we also wanted to do was take that data to compare it to what our current five-year program, based on what the staff had put together as well, and where we were at, which again, we thought was a check and balance that helped to give us some direction of how well are we actually doing in managing the program by getting that third-party comparison.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, Clark Neestram, please call the roll. I'm sorry, trustee Pittinger.
Okay, thank you. For, for the quotes that we had for the initial proposal, the, the difference between the Infrastructure Management Services and the, and the selected vendor was, you know, you know, almost $12,000, a difference between those initial bids. Is, are the qualifications of the selected firm that much better, where, I mean, are we, would they be proposing the same type of services with that much differential? Or what are we paying for that, with that difference?
IMS was, and again, part of the reason we wanted them to propose, and hoped they would, was they were the firm that had done the work in '03. But the major difference, and you'll see that the V3 and Applied Research and the Bennis were very similar, both of those firms were actually doing the manual survey of the community, using two raiders and driving every street. IMS was using the automated collection, so it wasn't the human element, but rather the automated system of a truck outfitted with gadgets, so to speak, that were going to collect the data that they would then give to you in a, in a report. That, the, the cost, though, in their proposal was based on them driving one lane in each direction, which again, isn't necessarily going to give you, I'm sorry, not one lane in each direction, one way down each street. So, if you have a street that, for instance, has drainage issues on one side of the road, but they're driving it on the other, the automated system may be collecting data that's going to tell you this road is in great condition, but the reality is, it's not representative of the whole street, which you're going to get better feedback on by kind of the human element, having those two raiders who are looking at everything that's happening on that segment of roadway.
Okay, and then, the, kind of the inverse relationship is with their price on the, on the bike path analysis, whereas they came in, their high-end estimate was twice as high. I mean, I, I don't, the quotes just didn't seem to make sense as far as when I looked at those two. So, and, is there an explanation for that, that you're aware of?
And you know there was, I apologize, I don't recall offhand, again, it was an automated collection, and I seem to remember one of the issues, too, was that they may have been, maybe collecting some of the bike path data actually from the roadway, which, again, it was using the automated system, but they were not going to actually drive the path and all distances, which is what the other two consultants were, were recommending. But I, I could certainly get you that, that information to follow up, but I don't recall offhand.
Okay. And then, we're, for this, for this bid, when it goes out, what type of, is there any guideline on budget, on the budget available at the time we put those out, to the vendors?
We don't share that information with them in the proposal, or even in a bid, but certainly what you're seeing more of is you will have vendors call underneath the FOIA guidelines, ask for that data. For MFT expenditures, we're required to file our annual appropriation ordinance with IDOT. It's also in our budget, which is available online, so I, I would suspect most vendors probably have an idea of where you are at budget-wise. We try to come up with what those numbers are, though, during the budget process. So, for instance, last year, we talked to two consultants to get a framework to do this work in this scope, and we're looking for these outcomes, you know, what would you generally charge? So, we tried to budget pretty tightly, so we think our number is usually pretty good. In this case, again, it came in slightly under for that work, which is why we wanted to try to start to look at the bike path analysis. Something where most of the bike paths in town have been built by either grants or developers as they've come through. We've done seal coating and other maintenance work, but again, trying to look out, it'll become a bigger expense as they start to, to age over time, so we wanted to, again, to begin to, begin to plan, to know the level of service we want, and the amount of revenue it's going to take to, to meet that level of service.
Okay. I mean, I asked that question only because, because of how, how close the selected vendor price was to the actual budgeted amount.
Well, and we certainly, when, we knew that, we thought Bennis was the most qualified based on the rating from the staff, we had told them, we want to do the bike path work, but we also aren't going to spend more than our budget, so we need you to drop your price, which again, is something that's allowed underneath the QBS in the proposal process, to negotiate with the vendor to, to try to knock their, their price down.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Abbott.
One question, Chris, is, why, I guess one question I have is why now? We, you said one of these analyses was done in '03, and was that a five-year analysis? Or was, or was, did it have a, was it, did it have a timeframe?
You know, I think it was actually, again, it was, it's based on the data at that time, and then the staff had taken that and plugged it into what is essentially a 20-year program that's set up in our own in-house database. Part of the reason, and what we're looking at again, is a 20-year cycle looking forward. Part of the reason we're doing it now, though, is again, you're seeing these large deficits and out in approximately, you know, the six-to-seven-year range. Part of it's being driven by a lot of development that was brand-new, you know, five to 10 years ago, that's now starting to come into the treatment cycle. But secondly, it, it becomes more difficult to start to forecast what's going to happen with pavement when you get out past one to five, you can be relatively accurate, five to 10, it becomes more difficult. After 10, I mean, it's really, it's a program, but by the time you get to that stage, you're probably going to see a lot of variations just based on the base drainage that's happening underneath, the volume of traffic, et cetera.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Clark Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Nay.
Trustee Pittinger.
Nay.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Under communication and correspondence, we have the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference video, and I was going to give you an overview of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, but that's what the video does. So, rather than do that, I will introduce Mark Beloga. We're very fortunate to have Mark with us this evening. Thank you for being here. Mark's background is, he's a longtime member of the DuPage Mayors and Managers staff, began his... began his service to DuPage Mayors and Managers, I believe, as the Legislative Director, and then, I think, Assistant Executive Director, and now, for a number of years, close to 10?
Nine.
Nine.
That's close to 10.
As our Executive Director. We're fortunate to have him with us. By way of background, as I recall, he is a lawyer and worked in the legislative process in another state before coming to Illinois, and we're fortunate to have him as our Executive Director. A lot has been accomplished through his leadership. So, Mark, please share with us the DuPage Mayors and Managers video, or do you just switch a button?
Yeah, I'll let the video speak for itself and just say the purpose of this has been to help those, especially in communities where not all the trustees and all the staff have an ability or the time to be involved with the conference, to know what it is being actual proof of the purpose of it here. So, again, I'll let the video speak for itself, and if you have any questions, answer them.
Great, thank you.
62, municipalities in DuPage formed an organization dedicated to intergovernmental cooperation. For nearly 50 years, the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference has maintained a clear objective: to jointly examine issues of mutual concern and to pursue actions beneficial to DuPage area residents.
I think it's really provided this regional coordination effort, and in doing that, it's created better partnerships between communities and other governmental units. It allows us, really, to come forth with one voice. That provides greater strength, I think, to our region.
We're expected to deal with complex issues on regional, state, county, and a federal level, and that's the value of coming into an organization like this. You don't have to reinvent the wheel.
The conference coordinates regional activities to maximize members' influence and participation.
DMMC membership has helped me through my being able to be with and converse with and communicate with and ask questions to other leaders, helped me to become conversant in those issues and understand how regional issues affect my community from the outside and how important it is for me to be involved in those issues, because a lot of times those things have consequences that will come back to my community. If I'm not aware of that, if I don't take measures to make sure that my voice is heard, I have no voice.
We played an instrumental role in shaping the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, which represents 272 municipalities in the metropolitan region.
Through DMMC, we have been involved in what's called the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and that's not only just our 35 municipalities in DuPage talking, now we've added our voice to the 272 in the whole Chicagoland area. It stopped Springfield from playing the city of Chicago off against the suburbs, and it has allowed us to go after really, really big issues.
The conference has an experienced and specialized staff. With guidance from members through committees and the Board of Directors, they effectively serve as the membership's collective watchdog, information clearinghouse, and advocate. This relieves each member from having to undertake these activities individually and avoids costly duplication of effort.
Especially during this economic time when we've had to cut personnel, we just don't have the personnel to be able to track what's going on in Springfield, to be able to track what's happening on the state, federal, or the county level. And so to be able to have someone do that for us makes me a more effective mayor.
My community is better off because I take the time to be part of DMMC and take advantage of the resources that are available to me, not only the elected leaders, the managers, and the staff. Combine all those things together, and you've got quite a brain trust that's available to me at any time that I need it. That's a huge plus.
You're never alone. You're all working together, and you've got resources, and that really helps when you're a mayor or a manager.
Networking opportunities at the conference are abundant. From business meetings to workshops and seminars, members are able to meet and discuss current issues and problem solve together.
Whether one is involved in simply attending the monthly meetings, or on a committee, or on the board, or serving as an officer, you will individually grow professionally in your expertise, and that's a real added benefit.
Over my 12 years of experience, I've learned a lot, but there's still a lot to learn. I don't know all of the answers, and I really appreciate the opportunity to attend the conference meetings and the other sessions the conference holds, to see presentations, learn new ideas, network with other people.
Involvement with DMMC has made me a better leader in my community.
Sharing municipal services is becoming a common theme in DuPage. The conference's leading discussions focus on improving efficiencies and controlling costs in public safety, IT, public works, and other services.
With the current economic situation that we're all facing, we all have to figure out how to be more cost-effective while still providing the level of service that our constituents and businesses want and need.
The conference and DuPage County have a long history of collaboration on regional projects. We assisted in the development of the original stormwater ordinance.
The conference worked very hard in cooperation with DuPage County in developing a stormwater ordinance that protects the county, protects the municipalities, the residents, from the effects of flooding.
In the 20 years since that ordinance was written, the conference ensured municipalities were protected. Now the ordinance is being rewritten, and we are working with the county again to make sure it's done correctly.
It's a document that will have significant impact on all of our communities in terms of development and redevelopment, and it's very important to all of us to get it right. And the conference is serving a valuable role by coordinating meetings so that we can get together, discuss the various aspects of the ordinance, figure out what works, and figure out what needs changing.
In 1962, transportation was on the minds of our founding municipalities and continues to be a priority today. We facilitated partnerships with area stakeholders that led to the adoption of the DuPage Area Transit Plan in 2002.
Several years back, the conference worked with DuPage County and developed an overall transit plan. The purpose of the transit plan was to reduce congestion in the county and increase mobility.
Since then, we have developed and implemented solutions to achieve the goals of the plan.
As a result of that effort, more than $5 million in grant money was available to various municipalities to help out with transit plans.
There are bus routes in Woodbridge that would not exist today if it were not for the fact that DuPage Mayors and Managers and the staff have helped us put together plans that enabled those routes to continue.
Through the Surface Transportation Program, the conference has distributed over $50 million of federal funds in the past five years. In 2009, the conference oversaw the allocation of $16 million in federal recovery funds. The conference also represents our municipality's best interests on the Elgin-O'Hare West Bypass Project.
They're taking a front-and-center position on the Elgin-O'Hare Western access into O'Hare Airport, extremely important part of the development of DuPage County going forward.
Like a guard dog protecting its owner's home, the conference works as the legislative watchdog for its members. We track legislation, meet with legislators, engage municipal officials, and promote conference positions on hundreds of bills.
Being in a position to actually influence those things by membership in an organization that has a voice much larger than the voice of my community is extremely important.
It's a unified voice. You know, many organizations, in fact, throughout the state, the business has their lobbyists that go to Springfield, the unions have their lobbyists that go to Springfield, all of the various organizations throughout the state have lobbyists in Springfield. The mayors and managers and other organizations like that represent the people. We lobby for the residents. Someone needs to be down in Springfield saying, this is what is needed for the citizens of our state, of our communities.
The conference has always stood as a protector of the municipality's right to self-governance. In 2010, the conference successfully lobbied to protect the authority of red light camera usage, enhance flexibility for non-home rule sales tax, and increase revenue from court fines and fees. Public safety pension reforms have been a legislative priority of the conference for years, and in 2010, it has resulted in landmark reforms to public safety pensions that will reap long-term cost savings. Work on these reforms will continue until a solution is reached. Members and staff are deeply involved in the legislative process and in developing our top priorities for the year. Together, we lobby state and federal legislators by sending emails, making phone calls, and by traveling to Springfield.
We all gathered together and went down to Springfield in numbers, and that made a really, really big difference.
The elected officials from the Village of Carroll Stream have always viewed the Springfield Drive Down with the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference as a very important opportunity to meet with our legislators.
We were able to go to Springfield and get the legislative changes necessary, again, acting cooperatively and collaboratively.
The conference provides technical expertise to help members address regulatory issues.
We were able to go down to Springfield, and we were able to stop a very big company, AT&amp;T, from giving us an agreement that was, would be hurtful to our residents and not good for our municipalities. In fact, we have the best franchise agreement now in the nation. Other states just rolled over. The mayor stood up together and said, no, this isn't the way it's going to be. We want X, Y, and Z, and we were able to do that. That's the benefit of coming into a group that has a louder voice than just your own.
Model franchise agreements are yet another way by which the conference supports its members in addressing technical and complex regulatory issues. When a member brought the issue of its expiring cable franchise to the conference, staff investigation revealed that it was a region-wide issue and used that leverage in creating a model franchise agreement.
Something that started in a wind field now has participation and support from throughout the suburbs and really resulted in a smooth process with Comcast that has gotten to a fair model agreement that all the towns now can take back without having to hire their own consultants to lead them. And so that is one example I see of the real bang for the buck. In this case, we haven't spent a dime on it yet and really have saved ourselves some significant costs.
We are currently pursuing a model franchise with natural gas utilities after issues and concerns were identified by members. A consortium of 65 communities was created and continues to negotiate the best possible outcome for municipalities.
We've been fortunate, the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference has taken a lead role in putting together franchise utility agreements, one with Nycor and a second with the Comcast Model Franchise Agreement. That has saved Woodbridge money that otherwise would have been paid for legal expenses, but also the technical expertise that goes with it.
As an advocate for communities, the conference worked diligently to mitigate a federal proposal to require sounding train horns at all crossings. The final result was the creation and maintenance of quiet zones for members. Municipalities outside the conference required the assistance of costly engineering firms to create quiet zones. As a primary resource on all aspects of local government, the conference has saved members a significant amount of taxpayer money.
We had a telecommunications tax issue that went into litigation. By pooling all together on that single issue, the Village of Lombard was able to get $200,000 back.
Another area that I think is important is the purchasing cooperative that DuPage Mayors and Managers and the members participate in. That has saved Woodbridge money.
We found that by working with DuPage Mayors and Managers, our investment has paid off probably five, six-fold on an annual basis.
I think you have to look at it as an investment. It's not dues as much as an investment that has a return. I'm absolutely convinced that the people of the Village of Addison have received more than they have given.
As we reflect on the progress we've made in the past 50 years, we realize we are only as strong as our membership. There's an opportunity for everyone to get involved and be part of this influential organization.
Strength in numbers, and I think that's what we see as maybe the greatest value of our membership.
I think our community has grown and been more effective in what we need to do for our residents because we've been a member of DMMC.
You get a much greater sense of what's going on in the world around you and certainly in the county around you by participating in the conference.
The one thing that makes the conference such a valuable asset is that you're not in it alone.
As a member of DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, I'm connected with other professionals and elected officials in my field, and the focus is exclusively on municipal government. Where are you going to find this type of an opportunity except in a council of government, such as the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference? Please join us as we embark on our next 50 years of dedicated and committed work on behalf of our membership.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, Mark, and as he indicated earlier, he is also here to answer any questions that we might have. So, questions for Mr. Beloga. Trustee Pittenger?
So, we talk about investment, and what are the dues on an annual basis that Woodbridge pays? And are they the same for all communities, or are they based on community size per population? How is that based?
Depending on community size, it takes the maximum as well. I apologize, I don't have the Woodbridge's numbers. Do a population over 44,000?
No.
Then you're not at the maximum. The maximum is, oh, 37,000.
Thirty, 34?
Cap of about 88 cents, between 88 and 89 cents per capita, so that would be the amount. However, close you are to 43,000, that's where the maximum, that population is where the maximum kicks in.
Approximately, I think, my recollection is 34, 33, $34,000 a year.
That's about what I remember at the end. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? I think part of the presentation also was to encourage additional participation. As a part of your Administrator's Memorandum, every Friday, when there are upcoming meetings, which have generally programs associated with, you're encouraged to participate. We know you have busy schedules, but if there are ever programs that you're interested in, the village would be very pleased to make those reservations for you, and I know many of you have also participated through the years on the Springfield Drive Down. Any final questions or discussion? Thank you again for being here, Mark. We appreciate everything you do. Under my report, you've received a recommendation from the Intergovernmental Council, naming their recommendations for the Village of Woodbridge 2011 Recognition Program, and the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the nominations for the 2011 Community Recognition Program Award recipients. Motion by Trustee Cunningham Pitzek, second by Trustee Pittenger. Final questions on the motion? Hearing non-Clark Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Ms. Rushley, Administrator's Report.
I have no report this evening.
We have no active agenda items this evening. Is there any unfinished or new business?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Pittenger.
One of the other groups, I know that we have membership, and I know a month or two ago, we got a letter thanking us for rejoining, which was the National League of Cities. I don't, I don't ever recall knowing what that actually, what the cost of that was on an annual basis.
Maybe $2,400? I can confirm that tomorrow, but I don't, that's the number, $2,400 a year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, if not, the Chair entertains a motion by Trustee Kagan, second by Trustee Pitzek Cunningham, to adjourn. All in favor indicate by the sign aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion is approved. We are adjourned.